Joining us tonight, additions to the agenda, I think Linda sent out an additions underneath consent number two and underneath business number 10, but we're going to move the business number 10 to...
Number two.
Number two under business.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign and carried. Approve and correct the minutes from the April 10th, 2018 regular school board meeting, which is already in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign and carried. Financial reports, the March 2018 treasury reports was in your packet, Bob?
Yeah, right now, nothing of note. It continues to be going the way it's supposed to be going, so...
Did you find any new monies?
No, no, I'm waiting for new people to bring out a money tree, so maybe next year.
Okay.
But no, right now, it's going the way, so nothing out of the ordinary that I need to report to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve it. So I got a motion from Randy.
Second.
Second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign and carried. Audit approval of bills, we have additional March 2018 bills and then the April of 2018 bills. Cheryl?
It was pretty much business as usual. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary. We did get our 2017 Chevy van purchased, so that was in the plans, that was in the works we were saying for. But I was glad to see that went well.
So is that in service now, or...
I'm not sure when it's, I didn't ask anyone when it's going to be delivered. I know that we have paid for it. We did get, I believe it's a local vendor that we purchased it from, so...
I've been with several bins, I didn't win those also.
Okay.
So I have a new motion to approve the bills.
So I got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign and carried. Consent agenda, review and, we have two underneath consent, so number one is review and consider approval to accept the following donations. $6,124.34 from the Ian Pelton Fund for the Arts, and then we have review and consider approval of the following athletic assignments for the 2018-19 school year, and that would be the head basketball coach, Rick Hendrickson, are the two that are on our consent agenda.
Board chair, just a couple of things with Ian Pelton Fund, that is being donated for a specific thing, and it's really for wire net wireless microphones, the system, and it's being updated. We're also putting in about the same amount of money from our capital fund to complete that, that system and have enough so that we can do it, and that's all costs because they changed the frequency that we had our current ones on, and we can no longer use those frequencies, so we had nothing to do with it, but we have to change it because we can't use the frequencies that our previous system was using, so...
That's a bummer.
Chair, I have some comments.
Okay.
For some point.
Yep.
Is that right now?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to say something about item number two. First of all, I do not know Rick Hendrickson, and I have no problem with him being the boys' coach from what I've heard, but I do have a few things I want to say and a couple of questions for the administration, which turns out to be you, Bob, here tonight.
Yep, I am here tonight.
And I'm going to talk to him, but I'm going to say it anyway because I want this in the public record, and I don't want to take too much time, so I wrote it down so I can make it very concise. One of the major factors that makes any program successful is leadership that is sustained over a long term. This is true of band, choir, theater, and certainly sports. Over the past 20 years, the boys' and girls' basketball programs have been severely curtailed by what I call the revolving coach's door. This will be our seventh boys' coach in that time, and we are on our eighth girls' coach in that time. Not only has our basketball program been held back by this constant change in coaches and kids suffering, my son, in three years of varsity basketball, had three different coaches. They were good coaches, but each year the program took a step back as the players had learned and system, get acquainted with the new coach. My son loved basketball, but his high school basketball experience was, to say the least, disappointing. He would use other terminology. Over these 20 years, some changes were inevitable, others were correct resolved mistakes, and I say this without pointing fingers at anyone. At this turning point in our boys' basketball program, I just have to say that it's time we stop this revolving door. My dream is that 10 years from now, Rick will still be here guiding our boys to one successful season after another. If this is so, I will certainly applaud our administration for their foresight. If however, in two or three years, we are looking for another head coach, I will, but I will be greatly disappointed. Therefore, I'll cast my vote, and finally, of course, I would just want to ask the administration two questions. First, I just want to ask, what qualities does this candidate bring to the position of head boys' basketball coach, so that he will be able to take this program to long-term success? And two, and I know that we cannot predict the future, but all things considered, are we committed, are you as administration committed to doing all of your power to make this assignment a long-term assignment that will allow the boys' program to reach its full potential? And does this candidate sit himself within his position for the long-term and not just as a stepping stone to some other position?
Well, as far as the qualities, the team that interviewed the candidate certainly believes that he has all the qualities that are needed in order to fulfill our Painesville head basketball coach position. Such things as experience and being able to work with kids are a couple of those qualities. As far as the commitment, certainly, he, in his interview, he has said that he's committed to it. He wants to be here in Painesville, he wants to continue to coach. I cannot forestall the future. I would hope, Rick, that we are in the same position as you with the first piece, that 10 years from now, he is here running an outstanding program. We don't make changes lightly, having since I've been here, and I'm sure they didn't do it before I got here. We make changes when we think it's necessary to better our program and to better meet the needs in, better meet the needs of our students, and that is the deciding factor in any decision that we have made. It's not about anything other than the needs of the program, but more specifically, the needs and what will be best for our students. I think the new coach is committed, if we hire him.
I just want to express, it's not anything about this situation, but it is very frustrating.
Believe me...
To go through this time again.
Believe me, we would rather not be going down this road ourselves. That I can promise.
Those are my comments.
Okay.
There were several applicants for this job, correct?
Yep.
I believe we had six originally?
I think there were six, correct. The administrative team is hiring the one that they felt best need, met our needs.
And I think just as a side note, I think Max, you know, we put him in a position to make the programs viable. I think he is committed to the Bulldogs athletics immensely, just by what he portrays in himself. I don't think that he took this anything too lightly either. He sees the same dilemmas that we are seen as, as board members for failure of engaging the kids in different programs and stuff like that, and I still strongly believe that it all stems back to the individual coaches, individual teachers, I mean, how, how do they become successful? It's their inner core, their inner personalities that make any person the best that they can be, so I think with that being said, I think...
I would just say that we're committed to providing our students with the best possible program we can. I make no bones about that, and decisions that are made are because of that.
I generally don't have much of this come to me because I'm such a great athlete, I suppose, but some of this has come across, and as I look at the program, a lot of what Rick says, I have to say the same thing. We are faltering, something, something there, and not that you can figure it out, you can have the greatest coach in the world, and maybe it doesn't always click, and so you've got to give these people some time, but at the same time, I don't know what the process is. I would hope whatever process we use this time was probably far different than the series of people that we went through, because it seemed like, as I was just getting started in the school board, we were going through basketball coaches, like they were going out of style, and it would seem like something was missing in that gap. But again, if this is the individual, I also think that full support needs to go for this person, because you already have an issue where maybe it's not a good idea for our board to not really jump behind whatever the selection is, because that person has to work forward. And, but again, I'm probably not the best one to come, talk about, I'm not a, I'm not a huge sports guy, I just wish we sometimes had this kind of activity in math and science and some of the rest of that stuff, and I don't see much of that, so...
I would say if the board approves, we are going to do all we can to help this individual be as successful as he possibly can.
And I want you to know that I've talked to some of the other boys' youth basketball coaches, and we are all, we're going to be the first ones to congratulate him and tell him that he's got 100, 100% of our support. We're behind him, I mean, we want to see this program succeed. It's likely to lose you after a while. I know there's more to it than winning, but...
We would, we would...
...we won't be winning a game...
We would prefer consistency ourselves.
I just want to say I agree with Rick, it's been frustrating through the years seeing so many coaches come and go, and hopefully this one will be a keeper. We have to support the coaches we do have, and give them all the help we can, and hopefully the program goes.
Well, it's appropriate, I'll move to accept the consent agenda. Okay, I got a motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign and carried. Business, we're going to be presenting, presentation on mental health first aid grant.
Yes.
We did find money for you.
Did you?
So, yes.
Good.
We have happy news to share.
Good, good, good.
Yes. All right. I have to speak into that. Here, sit next to me.
You told me to.
Please. In January, I received a grant application from Christie Zimmer, who's our school social worker, and it had the name Cheryl on it. Is that you?
I brought it home from the conference. I ran into a lady that...
Fabulous.
...spoke to her for about 15 minutes.
Okay, well then, thank you to you, because she handed me this application, she said, "I don't know about grant writing, but this sounds good, let's see what we can do." So, a group of us got together, and Mr. Hughes supported it, Ms. Canola and I have been working together on mental health and grant writing things for a couple of years, and not being as successful, we tried, but, but we had very enthusiastic support and a very short timeline. We threw together a project, and happily to say, we were granted, we're one of five schools in the state of Minnesota out of 39 applicants.
Ooh, cool.
People asked for a total of over a million dollars, they granted $100,000 worth, and one-fifth of that is going to us for our project, so if you want to go on, I can talk a little bit about that. Prairie Care Child and Family Fund has only been in existence for two years. Last year was their first round of funding, and so we got in on the second round of it. Bobby can click again. Thank you. We're up on the website, and there's a link to it there, so they also sent a letter saying that they were excited to get a public, a publicity campaign out, and I know that they come in and do, they come into the sites that they fund and do videos, and we're going to become part of something greater as a model for other schools in the state, which I'm excited about. So what we offered, and they, they seem to be excited about, was a collaborative, a community partnership between the school and the community, that we would bring together parents, educators, coaches, pastors, people from law enforcement and businesses, the hospital, and the idea is to saturate our community with people who have training in what's called youth mental health first aid, which is like Red Cross first aid, but for helping students, and looking at common issues that kids face, how do we help build their resilience, make them stronger and able to handle challenges in their lives, and then how do we get some support and assistance for them if they're in need in crisis.
And a couple of things with the youth mental health first aid, there are a few of us that have already been trained. I know David is, David Orline is going this week and getting his initial training. And our sustaining plan, which we think was the big thing that they said, this is what we want, is we're looking at getting people trained to be youth mental health aid providers, so we have that training, and there are, Mary Linecker and Jen and I went to Pine City one day, and we did that, but then the other thing is that we're going to have trainers within our own community and make it a continuing process, so it's sustaining, and the more people that we have in our community that are able to recognize some of the symptoms and understand what to do, is going to be that much better. We're not treatment, but we are that first step, just like if you were trained in first aid and somebody, you know, was injured, what would you do in that step to get there? And that was one of the big things in the grant that they gave us, was our innovative idea that it was going to be not a one and done, but a sustaining program.
Cool.
They also said that they liked the creativity that we had, and so one of the unique components we have is that next summer, we're going to be recruiting some high school students to get together and work on a social justice theater model. Some of you who know me know that I love theater, but I have worked with, or I do work with a director in the area who has had success across the state of Minnesota in using theater to educate people. So what we want to do is train the kids and create an original script where they'll be talking about stereotypes, about barriers that kids have, about stress, about depression, about anxiety, and then through a creative means, educating their peers, and ultimately, we help other students from schools around the state as well. But using theater as a way to start a dialogue and get people engaged in this conversation, not stigmatizing, not blaming, not making people feel like they need to hide when they're struggling, but to understand that it's, that we're all in this together. And so I think that appealed to them as well from the letter that they sent, it was very supportive of our, our different way of thinking about this. So Don mentioned the people that are on our project team, kind of steering this as we go forward. We are going to be looking for a student representative, and that person has not been identified yet, but that's going to be an important component of our team as we go forward. Any questions?
So when you're talking about first aid, first aid, which is medical first aid, somebody got a cut, somebody got anything, what you're talking about here is recognition...
Absolutely.
...to create it, so that's the process we're talking about. You're going to train a whole bunch of people to maybe recognize something that right now is slipping through the cracks, because we don't see it. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
Yeah, and so much of the research says that, I mean, we all go through difficulties in our lives, and we all have times where we could use someone to ask us, "How are you doing? Everything okay? You need to talk about something?" And most of the time, it doesn't require medication or inpatient treatment. Most of the time, it's just that front level, somebody's noticing, someone's aware, somebody cares. And we want to build into, as one of our components, a resource listing on our website, hopefully on the district website, where parents, educators, coaches, anybody could go in and say, "What, I'd like to be able to tell somebody where they could get more information? Here's a simple link," you know, to give them that, because most people have, you know, can find the resilience, or with a little bit of support, build up that resilience so that they don't fall into a crisis.
And the other thing I think that we gain from going through the training ourselves, it's very intense, and it's an eight-hour training, and when you get done, you're, you're exhausted.
On a Saturday.
On a Saturday, but, but you're, you're exhausted when you get done, but there are some things that in our common life, we may not do the way that, that is going to be most helpful to somebody that's experiencing some kind of a mental health dilemma, and, and, you know, one of the role plays that was very hard that we had to do, if Jen and I were working together, was that we actually had to ask that person upfront, straightforward, "Are you planning on killing yourself?" And that's the extreme, and even the role playing was very hard, because we had to play both sides of the issue. And in Minnesota, nice, oh, I'm fine, and I'm fine, sometimes we have to dig a little deeper to make sure that we're able to, sometimes just give that reach out, that helping hand that's going to be there, that may be that one thing, that somebody doesn't do something to themselves or somebody else.
So can you roll this back? Right answers. So you're giving 20,000?
19, hold on, I'll give you a good shot.
Okay, well, give me the exact...
$1,318.
Okay, so if, so that's going to cover the program that you have set up now, if there's sustaining needs after that, do we have plans to try and...
Well, what we're looking at is the people that are going to be trainers. Part of it in paying for their training and going to whichever site it will be offered at. Those people, because we're getting them trained, the expectation is that two times a year, they will offer through community ed, through those types of things, the program for it. So it will be working with community ed quite a bit, working with the community, and that initial group in August, we're going to get 20 more people that are first aid trained.
25.
20, I thought it was 20.
25.
Okay, 25, 20 to 25. We have a great number of staff that are very, very interested in it. The woman that's coming out to do the training was here for a presentation that it was kind of, "Here's some stuff to think about," and so many people in that training said, "Oh, I wish you would have given us the step-by-step-by-step, but you can't do that in two hours."
Right.
So the people that are going to get trained, and I know we've talked about different people, they will be able to make sure that we continue out, and then as a kind of, that pebble in the, in the water, it will continue.
Well, they're concerned, I always have, when you get a grant, you use it, you don't just drop the program, but now we don't, so there's some way of staying.
Right, so the 25 initial people, and again, we wrote into the grant that it's also community-based, so we've kind of put a two-thirds to one-third ratio, we want two-thirds of the people to come from our school district, and a third to come from the community, whether it's parents, pastors, coaches, whoever, people, law enforcement, people from the hospital, who want to come together and work with us. Their training is going to be paid for. Once we start offering it through community ed, we would be volunteering our time, but people will have to pay for the materials after that. So people that get in on this first level, there'll be no cost to them at all, and then things like maintaining the resource listing, I don't know what that cost is to put a link on our website, but I'm hoping that once that's established, that just will be there, and then we can update it, because you're right, you want to make sure you have ongoing, yeah.
So we have this program, and it still goes on, it's done by the Mrs. Anders, was that called T, TLC? I always think of TLC, I'm not sure that's what it is, but when I first got on the board, there was some, some parental issues with the program, but I ended up meeting with a bunch of those students, but what I saw as an overview was a bunch of students very concerned about a whole bunch of other students, and everybody in kind of that kind of stuff, and I've had Bob roll this back, because the leader of that department, or that class, or however you determine that, isn't on your list here, but that was when I, I wondered sometimes why our schools seem to be, the kids seem to get along pretty good and everything, and you know that all the issues you're working on are there, but that was an area where I wonder if they're going to be involved in this. I look at it, and I see some of these kids that became at that time leaders, and some of that. Well, if the student representative is John Doe that's not involved in that, I'm not sure that, you see what I'm saying? So is there coordination with that? I happen to think that program by itself is a very good thing for the school district.
Well, I would say that with the project team that's up there, because we were on such a tight timeline from when we got it, and looking at it with Jen and Mary and I, having gone through the certification we put our input in, but with that, we're looking at coming up, and we're, we're not 100% certain about how to pick that student representative, because we want them to be very active, but we don't necessarily want that student that is, you know, going to be recognized in the paper and everything, so that student that gets along with other people. So we're going to get people that are going to be included with it, and the fact that we're going two-thirds, one-third, we want, we would hope that by the end of the first 18 months, that everybody in our school is certified with this. That's our hope. And that, and if we go from there, and then we have, you know, we have everybody in our school certified in youth mental health first aid, and we have another 60 people that are out in the community, we have a whole lot of contacts, because that one student may not get along with you, but will get along with Mark, and if we have those resources and those people that have the training, I think that we're going to be able to cover our whole realm of our student population, and the nice thing about youth mental health first aid is there is an adult mental health first aid that goes with it, but we want to focus right now on our students, and that might be something to look at in the future.
So are you set on one person in the school?
There's a lot of stuff that happens here, and these kids know far faster than anybody else knows what's going on, probably before most of the instructors do, and are we set, are you set on one student?
Well, for the project team, but, but when we do the youth theater...
So the training will be for a lot of students?
The training is going to affect a lot of people, yes.
I got you.
But like the theater part, for example, we, I think we wrote into here, 20 to 30 students can be directly involved in that project, where they would come together with us, they would do training, they would go out and work with peers, kind of goes from that community health philosophy that the, if we're, if we're all better, we're all better, you know, like the more of us that have that strength and that resilience and that training. So no, we don't, this isn't meant to be, this isn't meant to be hidden away or kept for just a small number of people, this is meant to be a shared philosophy and something that we can offer. Look, our community's done this with the Alzheimer's, yeah, becoming this caring community, we are, we called it Painesville Cares because we have a community that does.
Yeah, oh, very good.
And when we put the information into the grant, that was something that we said we can tap, tap into that network, and, you know, we haven't got to talk to the grant reviewers, but that was something that, as we were working with it, we were like, we've done it with one thing, I think that as a community, we can do it with more and, and create that great network.
Yeah. One of the frustrations with the federal grant we wrote a few years ago was that their feedback was, "We don't have any problems." I thought, okay, we also don't have any resources, would be more reality. I mean, our, our families are between two large cities, that, that it's, it's literally a burden for people sometimes to drive, to go, to make appointments, to try to get help and get support and resources, so we have a great community, but let's strengthen each other then, you know, and certainly give people referrals and resources when they need them, but a lot of times, just knowing other people in the community are there for you, that's a huge thing.
Very good.
Yep.
Like, from my point, I would just like to congratulate the team for getting the grant in the first place. These two people, with the help of other people, have written two really good grants. They didn't get one, although I thought they should have gotten that grant.
We did two.
Yeah.
And, and they really have done so on, they've got a lot of their own time to get these things done, so I really do want to thank both Don and Jen for their work on this. They did an outstanding job.
Thank you so much for running on that flyer.
Good on you for getting that to Christie, thank you. It's wonderful.
Great, good job, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go down, actually put in number 10, review and consider approval of MUD...
MOU.
Or MOU, I'm sorry. MOU between EMPA, which is the Education Minnesota Painesville Association, and the District 741.
Right, this really, I probably should add before we approve the first calendar. Our calendar right now shows 183 days, and really, the teachers are under contract for 184, but the 884th day is really that flex date that the staff will put in during the summer, or really, any time between the start of the year, which is July, through June 10 of next year. They need to get that staff development day done, or they don't get paid for that staff development day. If they do half of the day, then they would get prorated for the half of the day. But this particular piece, when you look at number one on this, it just says the teachers will submit a training option plan, a top plan for administrative approval, to be completed and lieu of a workday. Teachers who do not complete their, their TOP plan by June 10, 2018, will have their salary reduced proportionally, and then it says that 2018-19 Painesville School Calendar currently has 183 days listed. The flex staff development day would add one day that is not listed, that would bring the number of licensed staff days to a total of 184. So it was really, when we talked with EMPA and the teachers, we just wanted to clarify this to make it perfectly clear for... this, to make it perfectly clear for all sides what was expected. This is an MOU for one year, so it's just for the next school year. If it goes well, I would expect that sometime next year, you'll get another MOU saying the same thing. So it's on set. So I would like this approval before we approve the change to the calendar.
Motion to approve.
And a motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions?
I had an email that came up in this, and I've been flying around, testing. A lot of people, a lot of teachers are wondering, since many workshops come up in June, if they've used those.
No, we're going to have to stick, as long as they can get it in in the first part of June. The reason for that is, is the way we have this plan in place, we have to have, Amanda needs to know whether somebody has completed.
No, no, I'm saying, we get done with school May, this year, we're talking about...
Got to be in the next school year.
Okay. It was just, it was one of those that came up, and then we said we would ask?
Yes.
And I just did not get it.
Yeah, if we thought we could, you know, just, we need to do it in the school year, which starts in July 1st, to the next, it's really our business year. So, yes, but if they can get anything done before June 10th, then that certainly would count. But we had to set the timeline in place just to meet what we needed to do. But I do understand the question. We believe there are a lot of things that they can hopefully get done before that they'll be able to do.
Like our mental health first aid training, which will be August 21st.
I couldn't argue that.
Okay, any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Okay. Now, number two, review and consider approval of modifying the 2018-19 school calendar.
Two changes. One is the graduation date, which has now been moved to June 2nd. All right, that's one change that we had talked, and the board had approved at the last meeting. And then the only other thing I changed is down at the bottom, it says licensed staff must complete one flex staff development day between, and I had July 2018 to June 2018, we added June 10th. That's all, we just added a 10 to the bottom. So those are the only two changes to the calendar.
Do we approve the calendar?
One second.
So I got a motion from Rick, and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number three, review and consider approval of the credit of learning policy, policy 620.
Right, we're going to go through a few policies now that you've already had the first reading on. So unless there's questions, I'm really not going to cover a whole lot, other than go through it, say if there's questions, and then just ask for an approval at this time, unless the board, of course, you could table and go to a third reading. But if there are any questions, I would guess just ask for approval. So we have the credit for learning policy, 620, we had that as last year, or at the last board meeting. So it's really, the purpose of that policy is to address the transfer of student credit from out-of-state, private, home schools, online schools, that type of thing. So unless there's any questions to that policy, I'd recommend that the board approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So I got a motion from Lou, and a second from Bruce. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of the visitor of school district buildings and sites, policy 903.
This policy was really made mandated because of some issues that school had with students that were either PSEO or taking a different option, and they wanted to be at school and do work and stuff, and some schools were not letting them do that, so this is kind of the policy that they mandated for us to put in place, so unless there's some questions to that, I would recommend this is the second reading.
I make a motion, will you approve?
One second.
So I got a motion from Bruce, and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number five, review and consider approval of student survey policy, policy 50, or 520.
Again, this is the second reading of this policy. Unless there's questions, I would just recommend approval.
I make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
Motion from Bruce, and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number six, now these next couple policies are the first readings, right?
Correct, but they are current policies.
Okay.
So the board in the past has certainly approved current policies unless there was some kind of concern that they had, and they wanted it to come back as a second reading.
Okay. Number six, review and consider approval of our out-of-state travel for school board members, policy 214.
Yeah, these are all built off of the MSBA policy. One of the things that I sent you was a knock-out, that it showed you where the changes were. So I was, my hope that it would be easier for the board to take a look at it and determine whether or not, you know, they needed to do some work. One of the things that we did take out of this policy, again, it's the purpose of the policy, is to control out-of-state travel for school board members, as required by law. We really haven't had any school board members travel out of state, just because of our budget situation. We did get rid of annual review, really, we want to review these on a periodic basis. But other than that, there really are not many changes to this policy. So unless there are questions that you have about this policy, there just weren't many changes to it, I would certainly recommend that we approve.
I have a little question.
Second.
So I got a motion from Cheryl, and a second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number seven, review and consider approval of chemical use and abuse policy, policy 417.
Yeah, the purpose of this policy, again, is built off of the MSB model policy. Purpose of the policy is to assist the school district in its goal to prevent chemical use and abuse by providing procedures for education and intervention. Just a few things, one of the things that's been added to this now is medical cannabis, you know, so you'll see those new additions throughout. When you go look at page two, 417.2, they added again the medical cannabis, and also added C, which is use, includes to sell by, so that was a new piece, I just explained that particular piece. And then all of it is the same until you get to virtually 417.5. And the pre-assessment team, it said every school shall have a chemical abuse pre-assessment team designated by the superintendent to designate the team, and it used to say will be composed. We put down May so that we would have the appropriate people there, but not be set if, for instance, we don't need a classroom teacher there, because that was new. We put May down so that we'd have the option to put that person there, but if it's not needed, we could really compose the team of what, as we needed it. And I think the rest is pretty much the same until 417.7, and it just talked about number four, under A is the penalties that may be imposed on employees for drug abuse violations. And that was just added to that end of A. So really, not a lot of changes from what we currently have, just more updates. Any questions on this policy?
Just the only wording that, with the committee, that you have a committee?
Yes.
And do we have a committee?
As we need it, it's polled together. So it's not done on a daily basis, they don't do it, but when we think we need to have the committee, we do pull a committee together to assess things, yes.
But do you have certain people that are always going to be on the committee?
Well, our administrators are always on the committee.
Okay.
And our mental health people are always on the committee. But then it depends on what the needs of the students are, and who we need to have on that committee.
Okay.
So it does vary.
Right. But you could still have the essential ones with ad hoc people?
Yes. Yeah, the May allows us to have really who we need to have there.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, we would pull in whoever we felt was appropriate. For instance, if we thought it was appropriate to have the teacher there for that purpose, we would have the teacher there. So really, it's a committee that has certain people that are always on it, but it is adjusted to the needs of the student, and the reasons why we need to have the person there. Believe me, we want to have the appropriate people there.
No, but I, you know, with having a policy, you know, you start with the policy, and it says, you know, that you may have, or whatever, but it eludes of that you need a committee.
Yes.
And I, in my practice, you know, we have the committee, at least identified who are the committees, and then there's ad hoc members which are either staff.
I think that would be appropriate, yeah.
So then at least then you can identify that, we have the identification. So that, if somebody came to me and asked, who's on that? Maybe the board, I mean, maybe the administrators or...
We have specific people who are on that committee all the time.
Right, so then that's what I would have designated as your committee, and then have ad hoc members, if they're teachers or other people, you know what I'm saying?
That's the way it's being done right now.
Right, but I think you need it in writing then somewhere, right?
Well, you don't need to have the committee members and who it's going to be there, as long as you list the ones that you need to have on the committee.
Right.
And I think that covers all the people that are there. I don't think the May changes the fact that we have specific people that are always on that committee.
Okay.
I think we're fine in that regard. I think the policy allows us to do what we want to do.
Make the motion.
So I got a motion from Randy.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of drug-free workplace, drug-free school, policy 418.
Yeah, and do be aware, I didn't mention it, that these, all of these policies have gone through our policy committee. This particular purpose of this policy is to maintain a safe and helpful environment for employees and students by prohibiting the use of alcohol, toxic substances. Again, they added medical cannabis, and controlled substances without a physician or prescription. They did add the definition on page one of what medical cannabis is. Otherwise, they just reworded something. On page two, they added F. This says that no person is permitted to possess or use medical cannabis on a school bus or van, or on the grounds of any preschool, or primary, or secondary school, or on the grounds of any childcare facility, and that's new. I think other than that, and on page four, again, they just added a little bit about conviction means finding of guilt included in a plea, and that was new also. But other than that, there just weren't a lot of changes to this policy also.
I move that we accept it.
A second.
So I got a motion from Rick, and a second from Bruce. Any other further discussions?
Just one quick one.
Yes.
This policy and the one just before, they're almost duplicates. It looked like they were just enjoying writing different policies there.
I think there's a piece in there that they have to justify their jobs, but...
Nevertheless.
Nevertheless, it's a good thing for us to update them, and one of the things I really would like to do is get as many of our policies updated in current as I can.
Yep, good. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of the public and private personal data policy, 406.
Well, gratefully, this is the last policy I'm bringing to you today. This is the public and private personal data policy. The purpose is, this policy is to provide guidance to school district employees as to the data the school district collects, maintains regarding its personnel. All right, on page one, they reworded E, but it virtually means the same thing. They added H and give the definition of a public official. And then under public personnel data, they added five, is new terms and conditions of employment relationships. And this is including volunteer, or the following information on employees, including volunteers and independent contractors, is public, so they're talking about what's public. They also added number 22 on page three, which is work-related continuing education. Then B says, the following information on applicants for employment is public. They just reworded that. And then they get to, they added all of D, which is applicants for appointment to a public body. And they just added the whole section, you guys have read through that thing as far as what is there, so I'm not going to go through all of that. In private personnel data, they added E on page five, which is the individual's checking account number is private when submitted to a government entity. And then under N on page 406.7, you can see the highlighted areas, they added a piece under N and O, and then all of RS and TR are new. I'm not going to cover all of that unless the board wants me to go through that verbatim.
Sure.
But you've had the policies for a while, and then under responsible authority, the superintendent, it's under the current policy, and that was added to this policy.
I'll make a motion, will you approve?
So I got a motion from Bruce, and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried.
The policy committee is meeting again on the 30th of April, so look for more policies, possibly at the next meeting.
Good.
I knew that would make you all happy, worry about.
Yeah. All right, informational reports, policies, Bruce?
Well, I think we pretty much covered everything here. A lot of this stuff's coming to us, we've talked about a lot of things, some of it is still in the works, but it's coming along really good, I think.
Yeah, we're looking at the hiring piece, but we want to bring it all as one block to the board. So, and that may be ready at the next one, and that may hinder my ability to bring multiple other policies there, because that one will take a little bit to go over.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Bruce.
Thanks for the warning.
Exactly.
Always like to give you guys a dance warning.
Okay, Rick, C committee.
Well, thankfully it forgot me noteable, but, first thing we did, we went, we met there last Friday, we had to go through pick alliance to get to our meeting, had nothing to do with our meeting, but...
Did? Nobody stopped us, so that was a good thing.
It was concerning, really, to think about. We had a speaker that talked about mental health, so we got the whole first half of the meeting, dealt with mental health, what's going on in the state, and how it's going to affect us, particularly its youth mental health. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but it had more to do with facilities and, you know, where we can send people, you know, so it's...
Yeah, and just remember, as a reminder to the board, you can, go put these and post them, so on the C piece, so if you do want to see any of this information, you can watch the presentation.
And then we had two legislators lined up to come and visit, and neither of them showed up, so, you know. They're busy doing stuff like sitting on the floor at the Capitol for 24 hours. I wonder how she's going to go to the bathroom in that 24-hour period, she's sitting on the floor the whole time. You've got to watch the news to get that one. You know, we discussed briefly, I mean, it's in kind of, in between years, so there's not a lot, there's things, of course, they're still trying to push through the five-star thing, which drives me crazy, that they want, you know, to be able to rate schools by five-stars. Make it simple for people, you're a three-star, you're a four-star, I'm going over here. Doesn't take into consideration all the other aspects of like going into what makes for a good school. But there's somebody trying to push that through. So I didn't see if there wasn't a whole lot left, they talked about, but it's on the website.
Yeah, there's certainly a number of mandates that are, you know, being pushed forward by various legislatures.
I thought they'd given up on the five-star thing?
No, last I read, it's still in there. They, I think they, right now they have a motion to kind of, or at least a piece to simplify it, but they're trying to simplify a very complex thing. So, it will be interesting. You know, one of the things that I think is still up is can't start school until after 8:30, I believe, and buses until 7:00, they can't pick kids up, I think, until 7 o'clock. And I think that's still rolling around there. I don't know why, they just don't leave it up to the local district, but...
The more I, I'll just say, the more I'm on this committee, the more I realize, it's just craziness at the state Capitol, and it's just frustrating for us. Because they're telling us what to do, and they have no idea what we need, you know, and if somebody in Edina does something, well, that's the other, there's a big issue about reporting punishments, or whatever, you know, suspensions, and, you know, is it fair? Are we punishing more of this, and it came out of Edina, now they want everybody in the state to have to fall into their little package of what we have to do, and it's just, you know, that's the frustrating part. package of what we have to do and it's just, you know, that's, that's the frustrating part.
Could you both imagine being a legislator then?
I wouldn't be a legislator. And then sit on the floor of the Capitol.
Yeah, and then, yeah, then you can't go to the bathroom or anything.
Our meeting's going down the toilet, so.
Well, somebody brought up legislation, so.
You brought up the bathroom issue. You did.
Thanks, Rick. Administrative report, Bob.
Just a few things, a reminder to the community that we have our April 25th community input meeting tomorrow. It's going to start in the auditorium at 6 o'clock. We'll then move to the high school lunchroom after a presentation. What we're looking really for is community input on what they like about the proposed project that we're going to go over with them tomorrow, what they liked about the project, what they didn't like the project, questions that they may have. So there'll be a way on their Chromebooks that somebody will just type in all of those responses and we'll collect those. We'll also have an anonymous exit survey at the end to see if they support it and if they don't support it, why don't they support it? So we're going to do a survey at the end, but again, it's anonymous, we'll collect those at the end. We're going to record the meeting to get it out to the public. We're also going to provide links for the community to put their information in if they cannot attend that meeting tomorrow.
I have a question on that, Bob.
Yep.
I noticed that the, if they do respond on those surveys, they're due by Friday.
We haven't put that piece in yet to the.
I saw it someplace, I'm not.
I'll double check on that, no.
There was one, what you sent us and the table people would be talking about at the end, it said, you know, the.
I'll, I'll, I'll check the discussion piece, it's not intended, we will give them how much time. You don't want to give them too much time?
No, no.
But I believe we're probably give a little bit longer than Friday, but I'll double check that and talk with the team.
I put it on certain websites too, and I just want to make sure, so that.
Yep.
Probably sometime Thursday, there will be a video on the survey.
Yes. Yeah, what Matt is saying is that by Thursday, we will put the stuff on the website.
And that.
So they'll be able to watch the presentation, they'll be able to respond with their concerns, what they like, what they didn't like, and any questions that they have, and then they'll be able to do the survey.
And one thing I would just mention on the survey, I was thinking about this, is eventually we'll have all surveys together, but I would like to at least initially be able to see what people who are at the meeting have to say as opposed to what people on the way have to say.
So you're the second person to bring that up?
Okay.
And we've already figured out a way that we will do that. So when you get numbers, you'll get numbers from people who attended, you'll get numbers from people who didn't attend, and then you'll get the total numbers.
Okay.
All right. After we gather the information, then it'll go back to the facilities committee. Then at that point, we're probably getting to the point where they'll make a recommendation to the board. Right now, and it could be with changes, might not be any change, could be that they don't think we should move forward with a project of any type. And then, you know, that'll go to the board and then the board will have to decide how they want to move forward with that. All right. We're going to continue to work on updating our policies, I've mentioned that. We had our first baseball game yesterday, another baseball game today, so it's just nice to start seeing our spring sports actually out on the fields.
Yes, yeah.
Doing things for, so we're grateful for that. On April 19th, we met with a group of business, community and school members, we had a couple board members there. We discussed putting together a group to be an advisory committee to help determine the use of the gala dollars that we are grateful to receive and also work with each other to meet our strategic plan goal to provide our students with the skills necessary to be career, college and community ready. We're excited about the potential of this committee and we'll continue to put the committee together, move forward and we'll continue to report to the board on that one. All right. Fundraiser, Spanish activities, did a Boston's Best Coffee and they made a profit of $223.50. We're continuing to give the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment Test at this time, just a fun time for us in the buildings. And the school year is going fast, unbelievable, but we're going to be in May soon. The end of school year and graduation will soon be upon us. That's what I have. We're at a baseball game tonight, I'm guessing by the time, is it over?
It is over, it was a 4-1 to the good guys.
4-1? We won the baseball game tonight against, what team was that?
Uh, that's why I said the good guys.
But it is nice to hear that we won that game, all right? I think that is all I have tonight.